If we have quorum. Okay.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle, Senior. Gerald Canoria, Junior. Austin Watkins, Senior. Tyler Yellowboy. Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Still here.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Here.
Tyler Yellowboy. James Cross.
Yeah.
Ella Giancarlo.
Here's always.
Richard Ironclad.
Here.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Here.
Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior.
Here.
Garfield Steele.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
He left.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Present. Here. There, but here. Here, but there.
All right, Council, we have quorum. And I know there are some people who have to leave at four, so we're going to try to get as far as we can. But we do have the OST Election Commission here. So, do you want to keep going with F here, or? Finance F? All right, well, we'll keep going with Finance F as I hear two-thirds. Oh, is it Land? Sorry, excuse me. As I hear no. No one wanting to move Election Commission up as of yet, so. Who is reading for F? Is that you, Madam Secretary?
Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe approving the MOA between and among the Great Plains Area Indian Health Service, IHS, Sanitation Facilities Project GP dash two-one dash J ninety-two, and the Ogallisou Tribe in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars to repair deficiencies with the existing underground water storage tank to continue to provide water supply for sixty homes in the Wounded Knee community of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Whereas the Ogallisou Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five-three, in accordance with Indian Organization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three, and amendments, and whereas under Article three of the Ogallisou Tribe Constitution and the Ogallisou Tribe is the governing body of the Ogallisou Tribe. And whereas Article four, section one T of the Ogallisou Constitution authorizes the Ogallisou Tribal Council to delegate to subordinate boards or officers any of the enumerated powers in Article four, section one, reserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas the Land and Natural Resources Committee is a standing committee of the Ogallisou Tribe and has delegated the power to oversee health and human services programs on behalf of the Ogallisou Tribal Council and the Ogallisou Yate. And whereas the Great Plains Area Indian Health Service Sanitation Facilities Project GP dash two-one dash J ninety-two and the amount of sixty-three thousand is scheduled to renovate the existing water storage tank located in the area of Wounded Knee community. And whereas this project will impact sixty homes in the Pine Ridge community. Wounded Knee community that has been provided wastewater and solid waste disposal facilities. And whereas it is in the best interest of the Ogallisou Tribe and the Oyate that this project be approved by the tribal council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisou Tribal Council approves of the MOA between and among Great Plains Area Indian Health Service Sanitation Facilities Project GP dash two-one dash J ninety-two and the Ogallisou Tribe in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars to renovate the existing water storage tank for sixty homes in the Wounded Knee community on the Pine Ridge Reservation. And be it further resolved that this resolution is referred to the Ogallisou Tribal Council for final approval certification.
Motion by Councilwoman Rodriguez, second by Councilwoman Carlo. Any questions or comments? Any on Zoom? Seeing or hearing none, Madam Secretary, you can call and vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Ryan Jumping Eagle. Gerald Canoria, Junior. Austin Watkins, Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Ah. Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous, that passes, Council. Madam Secretary, can you read the two-thirds, item G from Land, please?
Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe and Unincorporated Tribe. Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe approving the MOA between and among the Great Plains Area Indian Health Service IHS Sanitation Facilities Project GP dash two-one dash J eighty-six and the Ogallisou Tribe in the amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand to repair deficiencies with the existing water storage tank to continue to provide water supply for six-hundred-and-eighty-five homes in the Pine Ridge community of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Whereas the Ogallisou Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen fifty-three, in accordance with the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen twenty, nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three, and amendments. And whereas under Article three of the Ogallisou Tribe's Constitution, the Ogallisou Tribe is the governing body of the Ogallisou Tribe. And whereas Article four, section one T of the Ogallisou Tribal Constitution authorizes the Ogallisou Tribal Council to delegate to subordinate boards or officers any of the enumerated powers in Article four, section one, reserving the right to review any action taken by virtue of such delegated power. And whereas the Land and Natural Resources Committee is a standing committee of the Ogallisou Tribe and has been delegated the power to oversee health and human services programs on behalf of the Ogallisou Tribal Council and the Ogallisou Yate. And whereas the Great Plains Area Indian Health Service Sanitation Facilities Project GP dash two-one dash J eighty-six and the amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand is scheduled to renovate the existing water storage tank located in the area of Pine Ridge community. And whereas this project will impact six-hundred-and-eighty-five homes in the Pine Ridge community that has been provided wastewater and solid waste disposal facilities. And whereas it is in the best interest of the Ogallisou Tribe and the Oyate that this project be approved by the tribal council. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisou Tribal Council approves of the MOA between and among the Great Plains Area Indian Health Services Sanitation Facilities Project GP dash two-one dash J eighty-six and the Ogallisou Tribe in the amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand to renovate the existing water storage tank for six-hundred-and-eighty-five homes in the Pine Ridge community on the Pine Ridge Reservation. And be it further resolved that this resolution is referred to the Ogallisou Tribal Council for final approval certification.
Motion to approve. Motion by Councilwoman Carlo, second by Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions or comments? Any on the Zoom? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, you can call that vote, please.
Wesley Hawkins. Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Gerald Canoria, Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Ah. Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council that passes, fourteen unanimous. Moving on to Economic and Business Development, two-thirds, item A.
Yes, Councilwoman. As I was reading the, the two-thirds under E B and D, I think it was kind of the same similar motion that Land Committee made and we just passed it earlier. So I asked the Chair of the E B and D, Mr. Steele, if we could just maybe just withdraw that one from the agenda because it was already taken action by Land Committee Secretary. Yeah.
Yeah.
You were kind of breaking up there, Councilman Steele, is that a yes to withdraw? All right.
Yes. Yes.
So we will withdraw that two-thirds item and.
Question.
Oh, yes, good, Councilman Yellowboy.
Sonia, weren't we going to include the Law and Order Committee in the resolution from E B and D?
I think that was the only, that's right, we had amendment to that resolution after we ran the motion and we included the Law and Order Committee along with the Land Committee. So that was to be added in there as an amendment, Stacy.
So would we have to run that motion with amendments or just include it as a last motion?
Or do you think we should run it again with the addition? Otherwise I can make a motion to include the Law and Order Committee.
There's the Law and Order Committee and the fifth member. So I guess I'll make that motion to add those up to that. Add them up.
I already made the motion, Mr. Yellowboy.
Oh, okay, I'll second it, probably.
Okay. Thank you, we have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, did you get that motion?
Any questions or comments, Council? Any online?
And that was the same one that the, under the Land Committee, the first two-thirds item?
Yes.
Yes, the government to government, so we would add the Law and Order Committee and the fifth member to that resolution. Okay, noted.
Excellent, okay, no comments or questions? Any online? Madam Secretary, you can call it, please.
Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Gerald Canoria, Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Ah. Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yes, yes.
Craig Dillon.
Council that passes, fourteen unanimous. Moving on to the President's Report.
Excuse me, Vice. Who needs the Election Committee up now?
Yeah, so that, the Election Committee was originally on the President's Report, but I think when the new agenda got printed, they accidentally put it under the, the Vice President's Office, so. So we could move that, I think their item number B, they worked yesterday, but we can move that up right now, so. Election Committee, if you want to come up and podium and address the Council on the issues, and then we could go from there, so thank you.
This is Councilwoman Carlo.
Thank you, Madam Vice. I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve all these written reports. That would be the Fifth Member's Office, Oyate Health Center, Bureau of Indian Affairs, Ogallala Lakota Nursing Home, H R, and the Chief of Staff.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Carlo, a second by Councilman Rodriguez to approve nineteen on, is that correct?
Also the Veterans and the Treasurers Report as well.
Okay. Madam Secretary, did you get that?
From nineteen, go ahead.
I'll include the secretary as well.
So we would just have left the President and Vice President, is that correct? Okay. No, I have a resolution, so. Oh. Okay, so just the vice.
Seventeen through twenty-six.
Okay. So that would be seventeen through twenty-six. Yep. The second one was by Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions or comments, Council? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you call that vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Gerald Canoria, Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Ah. Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
No.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Council that passes, thirteen yes, one no. Election Commission, you are up.
Good afternoon, Tribal Council. My name is Dorothy Brown there, I'm one of the election commissioners. Tiny Pooh Year is on leave, she's attending a graduation. And Ramona Whiteboom, she's supposed to have been here to help with the presentation. We did have the special election timeframe, I handed out the packet. And this was amended to include the Pine Ridge Village, Porcupine, and the Veterans Committee. And we did have the election on May eleventh. And at that time, we only had Lake Creek, Medicine Root, the Veterans Committee, and the Wounded Knee District, President, Vice, Treasurer, and the Housing Board. And the resolutions are included in your packet. And do you want me to read the resolution? Okay. The Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe certifying the May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one special election results for the Lake Creek District. Whereas the Ogallisou Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteenth, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three, and under Article three of the Ogallisou Tribe Constitution. The Ogallisou Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallisou Tribe. And whereas on March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, the Executive Committee of the Ogallisou Tribe did adopt Resolution Number twenty-one dash twenty-three X B, which approved the election office in the amount of, excuse me, election timeframe and the budget modification of the Ogallisou Tribe election office in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. And whereas the extended election timeframe was approved for the following districts. Lake Creek, Medicine Root, Veteran Affairs Committee only, Wounded Knee District, the Executive Board, and Ogallisou Lakota Housing. And whereas Resolution Number twenty-one dash twenty-three X B did, that's a typo, it's supposed to be twenty-three X B, did further direct the Ogallisou Tribe Election Commission to conduct the district elections according to a timetable as set forth in this resolution. Copy attached and incorporated by reference herein. And whereas the OST Election Commission did conduct an election for the Lake Creek District, Medicine Root, Veteran Affairs Committee only, and Wounded Knee Districts on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. A copy of the Lake Creek District election results are attached and incorporated by reference herein. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisou Tribal Council, based upon the recommendation of the Ogallisou Tribe Election Commission, does hereby approve the attached Lake Creek District election results. Now be it further resolved that the following individual is elected to the following position. Lake Creek District Vice President, Hattie Shangru. Be it further resolved that the President of the Ogallisou Tribe or the Vice President of the Ogallisou Tribe in the absence of the OST President is directed to sign this resolution and certification.
Motion by Councilman Dillon, second by Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions or comments, Council? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you call that vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Gerald Canoria, Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Ah. Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Fourteen unanimous, that passes, thank you.
The next resolution is regarding the Medicine Root District. And I'm not sure if the representatives have any questions about that with regard to the results. Out of the three thousand-plus members in Medicine Root, only one person voted. And so this resolution has the results attached. Okay. So I will read the resolution.
Councilwoman. Little Hawk Weston, did you have a question? Oh. She's going to read the resolution, but we have a.
Okay, so go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council certifying the tribal election results for the Ogallala Lakota Veterans Affairs Committee. Whereas the Ogallisou Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteen, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, codified at twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three in Article three of the Constitution. The Ogallisou Tribal Council is the governing body of the Ogallisou Tribe. And whereas on March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, the Executive Committee of the Ogallisou Tribe did adopt Resolution Number twenty-one twenty-three X B, which approved the election office, election timeframe, and the budget modification of the Ogallisou Tribe election office in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. And whereas the extended election timeframe was approved for the following districts. Lake Creek, Medicine Root, Veteran Affairs Committee only, Wounded Knee, Executive Board, and Ogallisou Lakota Housing. And whereas Resolution Number twenty-one twenty-three X B did further direct the Ogallisou Tribe Election Commission to conduct the district elections according to a timetable as set forth in this resolution. Copy attached and incorporated by reference herein. And whereas the OST Election, Election Commission did conduct an election for the Lake Creek Medicine Root Veteran Affairs Committee only and Wounded Knee Districts on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. A copy of the Medicine Root District election results are attached and incorporated by reference herein. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ogallisou Tribal Council, based on the recommendation of the Ogallisou Tribe Election Commission, does hereby certify and approve the election results for vacant seats, vacant seats on the Ogallala Lakota Veteran Affairs Committee. And be it further resolved that the following individual is elected to the following vacant seats on the Ogallala Lakota Veteran Affairs Committee. Medicine Root District, Albert Curry. Be it further resolved, the individual so elected shall serve for the remaining unexpired terms of office of the vacant seat on the Ogallala Lakota Veteran Affairs Committee. And be it further resolved that the President of the Ogallisou Tribe or in his absence, the Vice President of the Ogallisou Tribe is directed to sign this resolution and certification.
Motion by Councilwoman Watkins. Second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Any question? Is that all right? Councilwoman? That's his home district, so I'll let him do it. All right, so. Any questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you call that vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Gerald Canoria, Junior.
Yes.
Austin Watkins, Senior. Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman, Junior.
Yes.
Ron DeBray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Ah. Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Fourteen unanimous, that passes, thank you, Council.
Okay, the third resolution is regarding the Wounded Knee District. I did two separate resolutions, one certifying the election results as well as the housing resolution. The first resolution is the Resolution of the Ogallisou Tribal Council of the Ogallisou Tribe certifying the May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one special election results for the Wounded Knee District. special election results for the Wounded Knee District. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteen, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three. And under Article three of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Constitution, the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas on March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, the Executive Committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribe did adopt Resolution Number twenty-one dash twenty-three XB, which approved the election timeframe and the budget modification for the Oglala Sioux Tribe election office in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. And whereas the extended, extended election timeframe was approved for the following districts: Lake Creek, Medicine Root, Veteran Affairs Committee only, Wounded Knee, Executive Board, and Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing. And whereas Resolution Number twenty-one dash twenty-three XB did further direct the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Commission to conduct the district elections according to a timetable as set forth in this resolution. Copy attached and incorporated by reference herein. And whereas the OST Election Commission did conduct an election for the Lake Creek Medicine Root Veteran Affairs Committee only and Wounded Knee Districts on May eleven, two thousand twenty-one. A copy of the Wounded Knee District election results are attached and incorporated by reference herein. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, based upon the recommendation of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Committee, does here, Commission, does hereby approve the attached Wounded Knee District election results. Now be it further resolved that the following individuals are elected to the following positions: Wounded Knee District President, Candy De Sersa. Wounded Knee District Vice President, Olivia De Sersa. Wounded Knee District Treasurer, Colleen Steele. Wounded Knee District Member elected to the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing Board of Directors, Candy De Sersa. Be it further resolved that the President of the Oglala Sioux Tribe or the Vice President of the Oglala Sioux Tribe in the absence, in the absence of the OST President is directed to sign this resolution and certification.
Motion by...
Second.
By Councilman Steele. Any questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you call that vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Blaine Little Thunder? Gerald Canoria, Junior? Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellboy? Wendell Youngman, Junior? Ron DeBray? James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo? Richard Ironcloud? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior? Garfield Steele?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Counsel, that passes unanimous.
Okay, and the last resolution is appointing Candy De Sersa to the Oglala Lakota Housing Board of Directors. Resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council certifying the tribal election results for the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing Board of Directors. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe adopted its constitution and bylaws by referendum vote on December fourteen, nineteen thirty-five, in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four, codified at twenty-five USC subsection five-one-two-three. And on, under Article three of the Constitution of the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council is the governing body of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. And whereas on March twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-one, the Executive Committee of the Oglala Sioux Tribe did adopt Resolution Number twenty-one dash twenty-three XB, which approved the election timeframe and the budget modification of the Oglala Sioux Tribe election office in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, sixty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. And whereas the extended election timeframe was approved for the following districts: Lake Creek, Medicine Root, Veteran Affairs Committee only, and Wounded Knee, Executive Board, and Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing. And whereas Resolution Number twenty-one dash twenty-three XB did further direct the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Commission to conduct the district elections according to a timetable as set forth in this resolution. Copy attached and incorporated by reference herein. And whereas the OST Election Commission did conduct an election for the Lake Creek Medicine Root Veteran Affairs Committee only and Wounded Knee Districts on May eleven, two thousand twenty-one. A copy of the Wounded Knee District election results are attached and incorporated by reference herein. And whereas the Charter of the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing adopted by Ordinance Number twenty-sixty-three, dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty, provides that the Board of Directors of Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing shall consist of a nine-member Board of Directors made up of enrolled tribal members who represent each of the nine political districts of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and who reside in the respective district from which they are elected. Article four, subsection two, eight. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oglala Sioux Tribal Council, based on the recommendation, recommendation of the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Commission, does hereby certify and approve their election, election results for vacant seats on the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing Board of Directors. And be it further resolved that the following individual is elected to the following vacant seats on the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing Board of Directors, Wounded Knee District, Candy De Sersa. Be it further resolved that the individual so elected shall serve for the four-year term of office on the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing Board of Directors from the Wounded Knee District. And be it further resolved that the term of office of the members of the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing Board of Directors shall be determined in accordance with Article four, section two, B, three of the Charter of the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing adopted by Ordinance Number twenty-sixty-three, dated September thirtieth, two thousand twenty. For the first election held upon adoption of this ordinance, four candidates shall be elected to serve a two-year term, and five candidates shall be elected to serve a four-year term. Upon election, the candidate shall draw lots to determine which seats the candidate shall, whoops, which seats will be two-year terms, which seats will be four-year terms. The drawing of lots shall be conducted by the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Commission. Be it further resolved, on April eighth, two thousand twenty-one, the Oglala Sioux Tribe Election Commission conducted drawing of lots for four and two-year terms for the Oglala Sioux Lakota Housing Board of Directors, and the results were: four-year terms, Wounded Knee District, Medicine Root District, Oglala District, Pine Ridge Village, Wakpanee District. Two-year terms, Pass Creek District, Porcupine District, Lake Creek District, Eagle Nest District. Be it further resolved that the President of the Oglala Sioux Tribe or in his absence, the Vice President of the Oglala Sioux Tribe is directed to sign this resolution and certification.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Steele, second by Councilman Rodriguez. Any questions or concerns, Council? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you run the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins, Senior? Blaine Little Thunder? Gerald Canoria, Junior? Austin Watkins, Senior? Tyler Yellboy? Wendell Youngman, Junior? Ron DeBray? James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo?
Yes.
Richard Ironcloud? Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Bernardo Rodriguez, Junior? Garfield Steele?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Counsel, that passes unanimous, thank you. Congratulations to all the elected officials. And thank you for the Election Commission, for all your work in getting that done, yes. So if we could have the newly elected officials come forward?
Yes, we have Richard Little Hawk to swear in the four, five candidate, four candidates. Hattie Shangru was not able to make it, so probably can't have her. Can you, Olivia, Candy, Colleen, and Albert? Thank you, Council.
I I do solemnly swear, repeat after me, do solemnly swear that I will promote, preserve, and strengthen the general health and welfare of the Oglala Lakota Oyati. And I will support and defend this Constitution and the human rights of the Oglala Lakota Oyati. And the human rights of other peoples as recognized in international laws, treaties, which include both the eighteen fifty-one and the eighteen sixty-eight Lord Laramie Treaties and declarations. Congratulations.
Congratulations and thank you, and welcome to public service.
So Counsel, so, item one of my report, Jennifer Hughes, are you on?
I am on, Mr. President.
Okay, did you want to present the DAPL item?
Sure, that would be great. Um, so, just trying to call it up. The, this, this particularly, this issue is, um, ultimately, it's a resolution and a proposed contract with Mr. Richard White, who is in, he's an engineer, out of Utah. He served as the tribe's environmental expert for the DAPL case. He wrote a couple of different reports for the tribe. He's provided advice to the tribe on the DAPL issue. We are in the stage of the DAPL Environmental Impact Statement being prepared by the Army Corps of Engineers. And there are various opportunities for the tribe to submit comments during that process. And so the effort today, frankly, the, the, the only issue today that I'm talking about to you here in open forum is the, the effort to bring Mr. Richard White back on the tribe's team. He, again, he's worked for the tribe for a few years on the DAPL issue. His existing or previous contract, the scope of work was just too specific. It wouldn't cover what's on hand for the tribe today. And so the new proposed contract would have a, a scope of work that is what we need, which is simply providing expert advice to the tribe about and input on the Dakota Access Pipeline Environmental Impact Statement. And so there is a proposed contract, not sure if that's been handed out, and a proposed resolution that's somewhat pro forma and matches the resolution that you've used previously. And I'm happy to read the resolution, I'm happy to make sure, uh, if you want to, if you want me to walk through the contract, it's the same format as the contract they used before, but I must admit his rate went from one fifty to one sixty per hour. Other than that, and other than the scope of work that I mentioned, it's the same format of the contract. We originally, when we brought him on, or when the tribe brought him on, he was amenable and agreed to the tribe's, the tribe changing the disputes resolution clause so that it would, the agreement would be governed by the laws of the Oglala Sioux Tribe and that he would be, it would be resolved for alternative dispute resolution or in the courts of the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Um, and it also has other, you know, kind of standard but good language that the tribe has prepared for dispute resolution. And Mr. White has agreed to that in the past. His normal contract would say that the agreement would be governed by the laws of Utah. But he is, you know, agreeing to the jurisdiction of the tribe here for the purposes of, you know, if there are any disputes arising out of this contract. How would you like to proceed, Mr. President? Would you like me to read the resolution?
Yeah, that'd be fine, Jennifer, you read the resolution, thank you.
Okay, so the resolution is, um, resolution of the Oglala Sioux Tribe, excuse me, a resolution of the Tribal Council of the Oglala Sioux Tribe approving contract of Richard B. White, P E P L L C, to provide expert advice to the tribe about and input on the Dakota Access Pipeline Environmental Impact Statement. Whereas the Oglala Sioux Tribe organized in accordance with Section sixteen of the Indian Reorganization Act of nineteen thirty-four and on December fourteen, nineteen thirty-five, by adopting a federally approved constitution and bylaws. And whereas the tribal constitution authorizes the tribal council in Article four, section one B, to employ legal counsel of the tribe, and in section one F, to manage all economic affairs and enterprises of the tribe. And whereas the United States Army Corps of Engineers Corps is pursuant to a court order preparing an environmental impact statement to evaluate the potential granting of an easement to Dakota Access LLC for the Dakota Access Pipeline across Lake Owahhee. And whereas the Corps is undertaking, undertaking this EIS because two federal courts in the DAPL litigation in which the tribe was a plaintiff concluded that the permitting process the Corps conducted for the DAPL violated federal law and vacated the easement for the DAPL. And whereas the tribe will be providing comments to the Corps at every opportunity throughout the EIS process. And whereas the tribe needs expert analysis specifically on certain issue areas such as spill risk mitigation and impacts of oil spills and water resources, among other areas, to provide effective comments and expert advice and assistance in any meeting that the tribe has with the Corps on the DAPL EIS issue. And whereas Richard B. White, who was previously with Earthfax Engineering Group LLC, Earthfax, and now has his own company, has considerable experience in environmental research and analysis and previously prepared expert reports for the tribe on and provided advice to the tribe and its team on the DAPL issue already. And whereas the attached proposed contract between the tribe and Richard B. White, P E L L C, sets Richard B. White's compensation at one hundred and sixty dollars per hour plus reasonable expenses. And whereas the tribe believes it is in the best, it is in the tribe's best interest... And whereas the tribe believes it is in the best, it is in the tribe's best interest to approve Richard B. White's contract attached so he can provide expert advice to the tribe about an input on the DAPL EIS. And whereas payments for such contract shall be from the contractual services line item. Now therefore be it resolved that the Tribal Council of the Ogallisou tribe does hereby approve the contract of Richard B. White P E P L L C, which is attached to this resolution certification.
Motion.
Motion made by Councilwoman White. No, sorry, Councilwoman White, question. Uh, second by Councilman, uh, Dubert, who is Councilman, Councilman Youngman. And, and, you know, Councilman Hawkins, that's right. Why is this not the second?
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Gerald Canaria Junior.
Yeah.
Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Rodney Bray.
Oh.
James Cross.
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo.
Yes.
Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior. Garfield Steele. Garfield Steele. Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Counsel that passes twelve, yes, two not voting.
Uh, thank you, counsel. So, uh, I have one more item. Steve, are you on? Steve Gunn? Steve Gunn?
Yes, I, yes, I am.
Um, Steve, if you want to, uh, present to the council, we're barely at court right now, so, um, so just give me a heads up.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. I do, I do believe that we have attorneys and others on from the ACLU Tribal Working Group on the, the jurisdictional issue that the Tribal Council has tasked us to work on. Um, I think that it would be appropriate to address that issue in executive session if the president is so inclined.
Motion.
Motion made as your second, second by Councilman Watkins, and will be as brief as we can on this issue, so everybody can, so.
So we have a motion in a second to go in executive.
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Blaine Little Thunder.
Oh.
Gerald Canaria Junior. Austin Watkins Senior.
Oh.
Tyler Yellowboy.
Yes.
Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yeah.
Rodney Bray.
Oh.
James Cross.
No.
Ella Giancarlo. Richard Ironclad.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Bernardo Rodriguez Junior.
Yes.
Garfield Steele.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
You.
Counsel that passes thirteen, yes, one, no. So we will be going into executive at four twenty-four PM. So we'll be putting some people in the wait, wait room, so, um, and we'll come back as soon as we can. Thank you.
Um, Steve, uh, who, uh, from the law groups on that we need to keep in?
Stephen, Stephen Pivar, Mark Carter, David Barteky. I don't know if Andrew Malone is on, but if he is, he, he can be kept in. Lisa Cummings, Jennifer Hughes, Thomasina Realbird. Devin, Devin Fletcher.
Okay, and, and Steve, uh, for purposes of conversation and expediency, is it possible just to have one person from the group, uh, present, counselor?
Yes.
One orange, okay, yeah, we're going to.